Would that clerk please call the roll?
All righty, Ms. Born.
Here.
Mr. Coolman.
Here.
Ms. Matroni.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
Thanks.
If you're able, please join me in standing saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flying of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You are allowed to give a knees for freedom. It would perfectly align.
I don't have to explain it.
The minutes of council for June 1st. Thank you, Mayor. Everyone has received a copy of the meeting minutes. Hearing that there is no potential change to this, I would like to make a motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes held on June 1st, 2020. It's written and dispensed with the read.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Thanks.
We have no special reports, and before we do letters, communication, citizens' concerns, we are going to, Amber take this moment because Amber has some place she has to go to to recommend Amber Rafferty to be the new Finance Director of the City of Perrysburg. I'm not saying replace Dave, but I'm just saying to be the new Finance Director. When you have a motion, I will make the motion to appoint Amber as the new Finance Director.
I'd like to second that.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Congratulate. Say, "For you and for us," so good. And with that unanimous vote, it is a lifelong contract.
Yeah.
I hear the retirement plans.
On that note, we have, the mayor does, we'll take a point of order and talk about our, Mr. Krebs and our Clerk of Council and Director of Finance at the end of council. Letters, communication, citizens' concerns, if there are any citizens who have concerns, now is the time. If not, moving to the administrative reports. At this time, the only thing I will point out that, given the developments in the governor's order, we have a lot fewer barriers to communicating on the dais, and hopefully, it's nice to see everyone's faces, basically. So that's the end of my report at this time. City Administrator is in negotiations. Finance Director?
Your report.
You're holding.
You sure you don't want to say anything?
You're holding power till the end.
I'll hold up.
He's holding power. Law Director?
I actually do have something. I've emailed all of you, and it's public record that we have an appeal from a decision by the Board of Zoning Appeals, but the same individuals who have filed the appeal are going to the Board of Zoning Appeals with a new, a new set of plans that they hope the Board of Zoning Appeals will approve. If that new set of plans is approved, then they will withdraw this appeal. We are supposed to hold a public hearing in a timely fashion. It doesn't actually say what that is, but we have agreed with their representation to waive that time until after they find out what's happening with their second Board of Zoning Appeals application. So I am asking for you to approve the waiving of time in the Needham, Mogul, and Sean Nester, on behalf of Sean Patrick Builders LLC and City of Perrysburg Appeal from the Board of Zoning Appeals Decision to City Council.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Thank you all.
President of Council report? I have no report at this time. Thank you. Committee reports? Finance, Mr. Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance and Economic Development Committee met on June 8th, 2021. Meeting was called to order at 5:31 PM by Chairman Mark Weber. Committee members present were Deborah Born, Tim McCarthy, and myself. Also present were Kate Sandretto, Law Director, David Krebs, Finance Director, Amber Rathburn, Deputy Finance Director, and Steve Bronder, Income Tax Commissioner. On the refuse levy, Ms. Sandretto stated that the next step for the refuse levy is approval of the resolution to send to the Board of Elections that places the levy on the ballot. It is a one-mill levy for two years, and the Wood County Auditor has estimated that we will collect approximately $792,680 per year. The committee agreed 3-0 to forward the resolution on the City Council. On the Finance Director's final committee report, the committee reviewed expenditures greater than $5,000 for the month of May. I asked about payment for fireworks, and Mr. Krebs explained that the city pays for them, and the CBB reimburses us. Ms. Born asked about a payment to Bergren Associates. Ms. Sandretto said that payment was for telemetry equipment that the City Council passed a resolution for. Mr. McCarthy asked about runout fees for Front Path, and Mr. Krebs said those are claims from the previous year processed this year by our former third-party administrator. Mr. Krebs reported that the balance in the Health Insurance Fund as of May 31st, 2021 was $66,580.94. Said that we've had a number of substantial claims, and the balance has been anemic. He said that he is expecting a reimbursement for the aggregate stop loss. Mr. Krebs requested approval of legislation regarding the Certificate of Estimated Resources. He said that this is the annual housekeeping item that is an exercise for Wood County Auditor to tell us what we are going to do to collect in property taxes. He said that we will have better revenue numbers later in the year. There was a brief discussion about ambulance collections, and Ms. Sandretto said that she reached out to Chief Ruiz, and who said that a lot of ambulance payments are from Medicaid, and those payments could be delayed, but also because of the pandemic, there were fewer runs to the hospitals. Mr. Krebs recommended that the city renew the property and liability insurance with the Ohio Plan through Highland Administrative Services at a cost of $165,130. He said that there was one other bid received, but it was through a private insurer and was for $214,976. And Mr. McCarthy added that the Ohio Plan is a big enterprise and is widely used. The committee recommended 3-0 to move this along to City Council. In the Tax Commissioners Report, Mr. Bronder reported 2020 and 2021 are typical years, because of the changes in due dates because of the pandemic. He said that collections for May were over $2.5 million, which is an increase of 105% over May of 2020. He pointed out that there were no due dates last May. Year-to-date collections through the first five months of the year are approximately $9.6 million, which is an increase of 20% over the first five months of 2020. Mr. Bronder said that compared to the first five months of 2019, year-to-date collections are down 7.5%. In other business, Ms. Born reported that Sophia Lustig has just opened up a new shop downtown. There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at 6:01. And I have two resolutions and one ordinance. I will introduce them separately. So, I would like to introduce Resolution 39-2021 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 39, 2021. Placing a replacement levy in excess of the 10-mill limitation pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.19V, on the November 2nd, 2021 general election ballot for the purpose of providing for the collection and end disposal of trash.
I move that Resolution 39-2021 be passed.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Coolman?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce Resolution 40-2021 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution Number 40, 2021. Authorizing the purchase of insurance through the Ohio Plan Risk Management Incorporated at a cost not to exceed $165,130 and declaring emergency.
I move that Resolution 40-2021 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
And finally, I'd like to introduce Ordinance 37-2021 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading in number by title only and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance Number 37, 2021. Authorizing submission of estimate revenues to the Wood County Budget Commission for the budget year beginning January 1, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
I move that Ordinance 37-2021 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Van Huzen?
Yes.
Thank you.
And our next meeting for Finance and Economic Development is Tuesday, July 13th, at 5:30 PM. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Safety Committee?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Safety Committee did not meet. However, our next meeting was scheduled for June 22nd at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Recreation Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our committee, sorry, I realize this didn't work. Our committee did not meet. I have no report, and our next meeting is going to be on July 13th at 6:30 as scheduled.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Committee?
No report, Your Honor. We next meet on July 13th at 5:30 PM.
Personnel Committee?
No report. Next meeting is going to be June 22nd at 5:00 PM. Nothing further. Thank you.
Don't mind, real quick, I just wanted to confirm that we'll be talking at the next meeting about the Recording Secretary and the Clerk of Council.
That is going to be on the agenda, both of those things.
I plan to be there, and I hope other council members can make it so we can have a conversation on what we're going to move forward with a potential new Clerk of Council, as well as potentially what we'll do with the Recording Secretary as well.
So briefly, to kind of summarize what he's talking about, we're going to be in need of a Recording Secretary to take minutes of the meetings, record the committee meetings specifically. There's also a conversation that we had previously about splitting the Finance Director from the Clerk of Council, and we're going to be exploring the feasibility of that and what we want that to look like, and how we would advertise for both those positions, whether it be one or two separate positions. That conversation is going to happen then.
All right. End of your report.
End of my report. Thanks.
Thanks. Public Utilities?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report here today. Our next scheduled meeting is on June 23rd at 6:30 PM. There is a resolution underneath our committee here. However, Mr. Coolman has requested to introduce this resolution, so I will allow him the opportunity.
Yeah, I will briefly start by saying, I know there's two resolutions that were a part of our City Council packet, and we got two copies tonight. The resolution I will be putting on the table will include, the second from the last paragraph is the only difference, and I'll just read that out loud. Whereas the federal government recognizes and identifies that financial and technical investment in municipalities and municipal public utilities is necessary and appropriate to support efforts to address all of the issues identified above and associated with storm water runoff and the management of public utilities so that they can address these issues for the benefit of the region. And the federal government further agrees that any executive order will provide the financial support to address these issues in a real and meaningful manner. I believe that was a paragraph added by the administration. I agree with that.
Sounds like a lawyer wrote it.
Yes, it does, doesn't it? I think it serves the purpose of saying that if we're going to request that the federal government take action and put on some meaningful regulations or some compliance issues, that we be properly funded to help accommodate those goals. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Resolution 41-2021 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Born.
Yes.
Mr. Coolman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
No.
Mr. Van Huzen.
Yes.
Yeah, for just for a reason.
Okay, and Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 41, 2021. Resolution requesting President Joe Biden to sign an executive order for federal management that will reduce toxic harmful algae blooms that are costly for municipal water treatment plants and result in economic harm to fishing, boating, and recreational tourist-related businesses.
I move that Resolution 41-2021 be passed as an emergency measure.
Just pass.
It's not listed as an emergency.
I was just going to add some comments there.
Oh, we'll get a second, then we'll get a discussion.
Okay, second.
Discussion.
I just wanted to add that I think this is a very positive thing. I think it's something that definitely needs to be done. We need to clean up our water for future generations. I've been a proponent of that for many, many years. I'd like to go on the record with saying that. Thank you.
I guess before we vote, I applaud the presentations we, and information we've received from both H2Ohio and Dr. Campbell, and the Lake Erie Water Keepers, and their input and why this resolution is important. I tend to fall on their side. I think everyone has the same goals in those two programs. I think this is an appropriate way to help facilitate that and be a part of the conversation for change, so I will be supporting that.
Any other discussion?
Well, I think we all want the same end goal here, and I, and, but I just wondered if we've, and your paragraph here, Mayor, does kind of address issues if it was, you know, for finance with the municipalities. I was just curious about how this might affect, you know, private property owners. I mean, how, we just don't know. It's just hard to say. So I'm just wondering if we're just giving the federal government a little, little, you know, too much leeway here without giving the H2Ohio initiative a chance to work on its own, but I know we all want the same thing. I'd like to add something to that, but it's different from that. I think it's a very positive thing for health. It's not a Democrat, Republican, or Independent issue. Something that we need to do is clean up our water. It's a health issue as well, so I'm glad we're doing something about it.
I would like to say, I am very conflicted over this. I've done further research on the matter. Everybody wants to blame CAFOs. The research I've done recently has led me to believe that they are not the significant contributors to this. Rather, it's legacy fertilizer. A very good friend of mine who's worked for Soil and Waters Conservation District told me that some of these farmers out there, if they did not fertilize their property for 50 years, they would be okay. They have that much fertilizer to last on the property. I'm not sure how this would address it. Knowing the feds, the feds always go after the easy solutions, which would be governments. And governments have done such a wonderful job of policing themselves. So I'm really conflicted. I believe H2Ohio is right on when they say, when they talk about the legacy fertilizer. And that's what we need to hit. And also, one of my go-to people on issues is science is my son. He's very, very knowledgeable, does his research. Everybody says, oh, look what they did to the Chesapeake, how they cleaned the Chesapeake up. He told me, and he's in the Navy, so you might well.
You are the only participant in the conference. Please press any key on your keypad to remain in the conference.
We're listening to you, Jen.
Somebody is, thank goodness. He's told me that if he fell into the Chesapeake off a naval vessel, he would have to get five shots. So I don't know how well they're doing if the Navy is requesting that of their people. So I came into this with my mind made up, and after doing further research, I'm really conflicted.
From what I've read, it just seems like the H2Ohio presentation was the only one that really gave us any real data to go by. So that's why I will not be supporting this resolution.
Just like to make a couple of comments. First of all, Dr. Campbell, you brought this to the fore, and I've learned a significant amount because you stepped forward, and I just wish more citizens.
You are alone in the conference. You'll be disconnected.
I wish more citizens would step forward about their causes and enter in the way you have. You know, from the get-go, when you first presented the resolution to committee, I was wanting to understand and know the legislation behind it, in addition to the resolution. And of course, we were directed to the Chesapeake resolution, and one of the things that I've learned, and again, I'll give you credit for this, is that the Chesapeake did not deal with non-point sources of pollution, which is really the farms. Their directive was towards point systems, which is municipalities and governmental entities and factories and those kind of things. So that executive order did not include non-point sources. And so it's like, then it was a question of why not? And we'll probably have this conversation in the future, but from what I've learned, it was because of the Clean Water Act. Section 404 excludes normal farms. Thus, that executive order didn't include non-point farms because they are exempt. And so when we look at what we need to have done here, and I do think it's primarily farms, whether we want to blame animals or farms, green farms, the executive order could not circumvent or override law, which is the federal Clean Water Act. So if I supported this, if I support it, I would be asking the citizens of Perrysburg, because with the executive order, as we know it in Chesapeake, will focus on governmental entities, indoor factories, and I think from the data we've learned, that's, you know, they're a source, but they're not a key source for specifically phosphorus. So I just want to share that, because I didn't know any of that before you brought this forward. That doesn't mean, and again, whether I support it or not support it, at the end of the day, we need to reduce the load of phosphorus. How we go about doing that, whether it's through executive order, which by federal law they can't, or by any other means, we need to find a way to do that. So I'm conflicted too, Jen, because it's a statement to say we don't need to reduce phosphorus load is not where I'm coming from. But how we go about doing that, and is it going to happen? I mean, we could say yes, and it doesn't happen for reasons I've just cited, so then it's for not. So I will make a decision in a couple of minutes.
All right, excellent.
Is that?
Before we do a roll call, Dr. Campbell, is there anything you want to add? Can I do that?
Oh, yeah, well, absolutely.
Is everyone on council done with their comments? Well, I'll just say, real quick, if you don't mind, is I agree with pretty much everyone up here as well. I think every one of us want to see the lake recover and be healthy. And however these votes are, it's not anybody is against anything with the lake. It's about trying to find what is the best solution. And my thought has been this whole time with what H2Ohio has put into this and the money that our governor has done with this. Palm River Watershed is the largest contributor, and Ohio has a larger stake in this, and we have been working this in the state side for the last couple of years, and there's money in the budget for this next year. And I would like to continue to see how the H2Ohio continues to, they've only been around for just a little over a year now. Let's give them some time to get this out. And from the presentation, it sounds to me that they are really working hard on finding out what those exact points are, specifically with that legacy and how they can achieve that. So that's where I'm coming from on that as well, so thank you.
Do you like a minute to respond to anything?
Well.
Please, just come to the podium as a courtesy.
Yeah, my name is Dr. Campbell. I live at 29774 Fox Hill Road, Perrysburg, Ohio. I'm rather surprised at some of the things I have just heard, particularly in view of the fact that the former head of Stone Labs has made very clear that the phosphorus problem, though there is a problem with respect to legacy, is largely due to increase in concentrated animal farm manure and that the state has failed to lower the phosphorus with the regulations it now has. I also have heard presentations by people from the Chesapeake Bay program, and it's my understanding that one of their advantages was they did total maximal daily load studies up and down the bay and the related tributaries. And that enabled them to discern when the fecal material was, or the phosphorus, was coming from non-point sources. This is the first time I've heard that they did not use non-point source evaluations, and I'm perplexed because I've heard more than one presentation. I never have heard that particular point made, and I don't know the law well enough and depth enough to respond effectively to your question. I'm disappointed to hear that the H2O information that was presented has caused people to focus on legacy fecal material. But indeed, it is a problem, but they themselves said it was not a major part of the problem. It was one of the problems in the presentation that I heard them make. So I'm rather surprised to hear what I have heard this evening and disappointed. When Senator Gavron gave her presentation to Timocog recently, she pointed out that the H2O program required some interesting legislation, that the governor was aware of the fact that his previous efforts at the H2O legislation had been cut back considerably by the state legislature. And if I remember what I heard correctly, he was concerned that that might happen again. And so he had asked her to propose a bond issue. In order for there to be a bond issue, it had to be voted upon by the citizens of the state. And it would probably take as long as two years for that to occur. So I just raised that as a particular question. I also point out that the state and other sources have put considerable bond money into this already. And though the component of H2O that works with paying farmers for doing certain things is entirely voluntary, and what happens when the money stops? The only reason that some of the farmers, I understand, are participating is because they're paid to participate. And what is this, the federal, pardon me, what if the state government should remove its support or there not be enough of it? Who is paying for this, and who are our constituents this evening? The farmers are not our constituents. The constituents are the citizens right here in Perrysburg. And we're paying for expensive water from Toledo. We're paying expenses for sewer. And those expenses are generated not by us, but by people for whom we are consumers. And those expenses are generated not by us, but by, by people for whom we are consumers. And those are the large farmers. There's no question about that. And that group of people is increasing. The person who is affecting the legislation at the moment is not our friendly family farmer. When I was in high school, many of my, my classmates were farm family, family children, and they were living on bits and pieces of inherited land and could survive reasonably well on 40 acres, and they used a very wise crop rotation at that time. Those people have been essentially pushed out of business. And I ask you a question. What industry produces 57% of the hogs in this country? Name of me some of the companies that, that are involved in producing pork. Smithfield Farms. What do you know about Smithfield Farms? What do you know how they're influencing the decisions that are being made in the government at this time? Smithfield Farms is responsible for production of 57% of the pork in this country. Do any of you own stock in Smithfield Farms? Do you know who owns Smithfield Farms? Hu Company. It is a Chinese wholly-owned company that bought Smithfield Farms. Do you know what Smithfield Farm comprises? It comprises 40 underlying organizations, some of which are now getting themselves involved in the, the energy production industry as it relates to windmills and whatnot. What happens if I'm a so-called pig farmer? And I bring to your attention an article written by Tom Henry in the Toledo Blade about two years ago, where he interviewed a farmer who has three farms, and he has, they're very close together. And how many pigs does the farmer have? One or two less pigs than he would have to have to be certified. The state is not certifying people who are under that particular limit that defines the number of pigs in a farm. And Indiana is. Other states do, but we are not doing that. So, those are called unders. They're not counted. Where, when money goes to the legislature, do you suppose-
Can we, I don't want me to take too much away, but you know, three to five minutes? Can we, can I-
Okay, well, I'll just stop there.
No, 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 well, you can go with the big-
I'm, I'm happy to have that chance to talk.
I didn't mean to break your stride, which I did, apparently did, but I-
Yes, thank you.
Any other assistant comments? All right. Roll call.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
No.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
No.
Okay, Ms. Bourne.
Yes.
Um, sorry. Mr. Van Hoozen.
I'll get around to him eventually.
I'm going to vote yes.
And Ms. Materni.
This is the one time I'm glad I'm last. Um, yes.
Okay. There's actually five and six.
Yes, the administration appreciates that, and we appreciate you considering the addition to the-
Thank you for everything you've done.
The clause to address, I know, was issues regarding unfunded mandates. We appreciate that very much. Service Committee.
Oh, okay. We did not meet, our next meeting is right on the same day after the utilities, which is June 23rd at 5:30, before utilities, I'm sorry.
Other business? I have a couple of things I want to say. First, thank Dave for all his efforts and service to the community. I want to thank Lori, and I'm sure there were a lot of nights where he said, oh, I don't think it'll be very long, not too much on the agenda. And people like me made it go on and on and on. So, we want to thank, we know it's a team effort, and so we really want to thank you. We're glad that you're here this evening. And on behalf of the entire city, we want to thank you for giving us Dave for, as a finance director. On behalf of the community, I want to thank you for your efforts and what you've done. Perrysburg is in a very strong financial position, as everyone in this council knows, and that is because of your efforts. The books are always in line. If you, you never have a report, but you will usually say, we have a clean audit, and that's a tribute to you. Your conservative approach to spending is not penny-wise or pound-foolish, but is, it's my penny, it's, I'm a citizen of the city of Perrysburg, and I'm going to keep every penny I can. And, and so, as a result of that, we have sustained long-term success as a community, but it's also meant sound fiscal policy. We have paid down debt on large capital expenditures very quickly, and that is a tribute to your efforts, because at various times, I know various council members ever said, well, it would be better to bond, it would be better to do this. And Dave would then pull out his, why it's better to pay it and use notes to pay down debt. And every time, he was persuasive, and council wisely followed his lead. He also made sure that our operational expenses, you didn't just buy a truck, you had to justify the truck and justify it two or three times over. So, because of your efforts, the city's in a sound fiscal position. I think the community owes you a great round of thanks. I know that from the administration's, also owes you a great deal of thanks. You have worked with a number of mayors, and they all say outstanding things about you. And more importantly, they've enjoyed working with you and enjoyed your company and appreciated your efforts on behalf of the community and your leadership, partly because they knew that you are essentially Perrysburg, Ohio, and you live, breathe Perrysburg, Ohio. I'm not sure when you leave the boundaries, but I think on occasion you have, but for the most part, you are Perrysburg, Ohio. I also want to thank you on behalf of elected officials, and other elected officials may join this, but I know that, that there's repeatedly been efforts on various topics throughout the years where you've provided guidance, calm in heated discussions, and perspective about what's in the best interest of Perrysburg. It would not have, not have been heard had it not come from your calm demeanor and patience. I personally also want to thank you for your efforts. I met you, I got appointed to council. Two days later, I found out I was the chair of the finance committee, and literally said, what do I do? And what behind the ears does not describe how little I knew about city finance, council operations, or even where council met. So, because of your friendship, your wise counsel, your wisdom, and your kindness to me, it is my distinct honor to call you my friend, but also to present you on behalf of the city of Perrysburg, a proclamation that took two pages to get done. That doesn't happen every day, and everyone will be thankful that I'm not going to read it all, but I will read a couple paragraphs. We are here today to express our appreciation to David D. Krebs. D stands for?
Donald.
Excellent. I know that. And I owe him for his distinguished career with the city of Perrysburg and dedicated service to the residents of Perrysburg that spans over 33 years. In his, he's himself is hardworking and dedicated public servant, at a time committed to fiscal accountability and transparency, and has provided invaluable leadership and guidance to numerous administrations, who could count on his counsel when providing perspective and recommendations on numerous issues. Dave took his fiduciary obligations to the chief, to be Perrysburg's chief fiscal officer very seriously, and has been an excellent steward of city finances, routinely, routinely receiving clean audits, ensuring that all necessary compliance and reporting requirements were satisfied in a timely manner. And his fiscal recommendations to pay down debt incurred on large capital projects, like the pool, the police station, it's a lot. The library, the second fire station, and other construction projects have resulted in significant savings to the city, to the benefit of the entire community for years to come. So, it was with great privilege that I joined, congratulating Dave on his outstanding career at the city of Perrysburg, and wish him many continued years of happiness and good health. And now, the best part of this is, first, anyone who's been to a council meeting knows that Dave avoids the picture part when proclamations are written, like anybody. So, we are going to make him be in the picture. And then, after everybody's done, I do think we make, instead of just adjourning through some vague motion, that we have a roll call. So, we gets one last chance to be clerk of council. Yeah, so, on behalf of the city of Perrysburg, congratulations.
You're up.
Okay, and as Tom mentioned, you know, I'm not one for giving speeches, but I did write down just a, just a few words very quickly. Thanks once again for all the kind words. It's truly been my honor and privilege to work with so many great people over the years and be entrusted with the monetary assets of the city of Perrysburg. There've been many great times and a few not so great, sometimes at the same time. I'll never forget one particular instance, standing next to Mr. McCarthy, as we burned the shine off our shoes with our eyes, listening in disbelief as our mayor celebrated a grand success for the city. And I can honestly say, he meant well. He really did mean well. In all seriousness, I take great pride in the fact that I was able to be a member of a team that played a part in making Perrysburg a place that people want to move to and be a part of. I challenge the current and future administrations to do the same, to keep Perrysburg a place that people want to be a part of. Spend the tax dollars wisely. Live within your means, but at the same time, aspire to be the city that others look to for guidance. Sponsor the social events. Look for ways to provide the best service to the taxpayers. Always go one step beyond what is required. It is my sincere hope that our city will continue to grow and thrive as we have for the past 30 years. I wish the city and all the people involved in it the absolute best. Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to say anything? Otherwise, no.
Yes.
I, I think you said it pretty well. The thing I wanted to also emphasize is Dave does an incredibly good job of educating us, Tom mentioned it, on what municipal finances are. Because I've seen it now with several councilmen, we all need a new education, and some of us need remedial education, one more time again. He's a real pro at doing that. He, he did have one failure, because you leave now, you can tell me 20 times, I don't understand the difference between a bond and a note. So, I'll trust you, and when you always tell us notes are the way to go, but I've, I've never quite gotten that concept. The, the other point I wanted to make is you can't leave town, because you have the best memory for what's going on around here than anyone I know. So, we all know where you live, and you're not required to come to Alcoa meetings, but we want to remember, what the heck was that thing with Laura Parkin and Gibbs?
There you go.
We're coming right to your house to get that information.
You got, you know where to find it.
You've been a great credit and a great friend to work with, and a real first-class public servant.
Thank you.
May I say, this is Councilwoman Bourne, may I say I've known Dave many years, and we were classmates at Perrysburg High School. And he's a great guy, and he will be sorely missed, so I, for me, this is a very sad day.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I, I have not been on council as long as some of you guys.
No.
Same. I was very impressed with him when, because I come from a government background, when I found out that he paid for the way the library had a schedule, I didn't know governments could do that. So, I was very impressed with that. And I also like how he sends us reminders on certain items like ethics disclosure and stuff like that. So, the person replacing you probably will not be able to-
You'll be fine.
David, I, you know, the mayor said on his first day as finance chairman, you put his mind at ease, but you couldn't have put anyone's mind at ease more than you put mine at ease coming here, because I have a little background in any of that, but you certainly taught me so much in, in such a little bit of time. And I think it's, it's really appropriate that, I'm sure the newspaper's going to have that article with your picture in the paper, because they did it when you started, and here's David, uh, when he started in 1988, so.
Don't look too closely with that.
The glasses have changed just a little. They've gotten smaller. So, thank you for everything you've done for me and the city, David. Thank you.
Well, I, I guess I have something to say. I have not served with you very long either, and thank God I'm not on finance committee yet, although I will call you up if I'm ever a part of that. One thing I will share with you, and I think it's a real testament to how Perrysburg itself is perceived. So, outside of this, I serve other municipalities in various capacities, law director, solicitor. So, I attend those meetings, but I've seen Roger at some of those meetings. But one thing that's in common when they know that I'm on Perrysburg City Council, it's a big deal for a lot of these villages to have some of the expenditures they have with road work and trucks, and, and some of them are in huge financial strain when those projects come up. And time and time again, when they find out where I am on council, they say, oh, well, you don't have to worry about that in Perrysburg. And I think that's an incredible testament to you, and my response to them is, it's because we do worry about those things in Perrysburg. That's why we're where we're at. So, I thought you should know that. I don't think I've told you that, but that happens time and time again. So, thank you for everything.
Thank you.
And just real briefly, I want to say, Dave, you know, the, the reality is, you're the first person I met with when I was elected to city council as well, going over the budget. And right from the get-go, I knew that I could trust you, and, and I think Perrysburg's finances represent that, and we just have never had to question, follow the money theory. So, thank you for your service.
Thanks, man.
Feel obligated, but there's not really too much more to add on, and everyone said such great things about you, Dave. The only thing I'm, I'll just say is I got your cell phone number, so keep your phone on between 6:30 and 8 o'clock the first and third Tuesday. Any questions I'm having, I'm texting you, and I'm expecting immediate responses. But you, you will be missing, and I will miss having you sitting here next to, to me, and you have always been a open door for all, I'm sure, all of us here, and it's going to be hard not having you sitting here at the first meeting in July.
It'll be weird.
It will be.
All right. Although I wish we could have him read another word on the resolution, but I'm running out of all of it. Just for old time's sake, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Can we please have a roll call one last time, please?
Why not? Ms. Bourne.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Materni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Well, if I say no, it means that-
Yeah, why not?
It'll keep you here a little longer. I'll say yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
And Mr. Weber.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you.